Okay. Call to order, please.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Roulette? Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Great. The moment of silence, I will be leading the moment of silence tonight, so as we begin this meeting, let us pause for a 60-second moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or engage in other silent activity. Thank you. Okay. Tonight's pledge of allegiance, step on up and correct me if I say your last name incorrectly, Madison, is it Madison Reganhat?
Reaganhart.
Reaganhart, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Megan.
Madison.
Madison, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I got the last name wrong. You got the first.
We missed both of them. How has your school year started?
Um, good.
Good? What's your favorite thing you've done so far this year, first couple of weeks?
Um, science.
What is it?
Science.
Science. Can you tell us anything really cool you've done, your teachers?
We've done a couple of like experiments, kind of.
That's great.
Oh, cool.
I'm excited to see how you do next year in middle school after fifth grade, you'll be moving up a level, so we are glad you're here and I hope you have a great school year. All right? Thank you for coming and helping us tonight.
Do you have any special guests with you tonight that we would like to introduce?
I have my mom, my dad, my stepmom, my stepdad, and my brother and my stepsister.
Man, you have a whole crew here tonight, all right! Well, would it be okay if we get a picture with you and Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mom, dad, if everybody, if y'all want to come up and take pictures right here in the middle as well too, please step right over here. Celebrity of the night. Hey, you did a great job, great job. Thank you, guys. Great job tonight, Madison. Thank you, guys. The next item, approval of the special board meeting minutes for August 7th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. Next item is the approval of the regular board meeting minutes for August 7th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we have Mr. Foreman, all right, there he is, come on up.
Good evening, Board, Mr. Perry. My name's Adam Foreman, Associate Director of Fine Arts for the District, and tonight I'd love to bring attention, of course, to anything fine arts, but one of our teachers from Broken Arrow High School, our visual arts teacher, Kyle Tadaro, this past summer, he won the transformative teacher award at the Oklahoma Arts Institute Quartz Mountain Summer Conference, and this is an award that is nominated by students, and he was one of just a few teachers in the state to receive this award. Mr. Tadaro is not only an amazing teacher, but this year he has stepped up as our secondary visual arts lead, and he also is the department lead for the entire fine arts department at the high school, so we wanted to recognize him tonight in front of you, and Ms. Barber, our principal, would like to also say a few words about him, and we were going to have Dr. Robert Ward, the CEO of Quartz Mountain, come up here, but he got a little stuck in some traffic and some rain and all that fun stuff, so, but we said, you know, we can still bestow lots of praise on him, so I'll let Ms. Barber tell you a little bit more about her experience at Quartz Mountain this summer.
Good evening, Board, Mr. Perry. I just, I'm really thankful our kids have the honor and opportunity to have Mr. Tadaro as a teacher. He's, he is transformative, he is very innovative in his classroom, he loves art, he teaches his kids to love art, and so this summer, actually, my husband and I were able to go down to Quartz Mountain and have dinner with him and the students that were part of this, and just get to see what the Oklahoma Arts Institute does down there at Quartz Mountain, so we also stayed for a concert and things like that, so just really want to celebrate him this evening, Mr. Tadaro, I want you to come up and maybe say a few words.
Well, thank you very much, both of you, and that award was a huge honor, and I didn't really have anything planned to say, so I'm kind of just making this up on the spot. But that award was a huge honor, and I just, part, you know, it's like anytime, you know, like a team sport or something, someone gets an award or something, it's like, well, it's really, you know, I couldn't have done it without the teammates, I kind of think of this as something that really is a testament, you know, to our students as well and their hard work. My job is to set up, you know, I teach the AP classes, AP courses, the highest level for college credit at the high school, and so my job is really just to kind of facilitate the drive and the motivation and the vision that the students have, and kind of teach them how to, how to come up with those things, but to send, we sent five kids to Quartz Mountain out of 20 in the whole state this year, out of 20 in visual arts for the whole state, we had five from Broken Arrow. And so, I mean, I feel like that's a big part of this, and I just, you know, want to say that the students have, are doing exceptional, and this is also something that, you know, they should share a little bit of that honor with, because they've done an amazing job getting a quarter of the students at the visual arts portion of this, and it's just a testament to how hard they work and how much they're buying in to what our whole department, our whole fine arts department and our visual arts department in specific is doing, so thank you.
Great, we're proud of you, and I know it's well deserved, and another job you do every day, so congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Tadar, I would just like to say, you know, I mean, you can see your passion, and that's something that is just so exciting to be able to channel that and to allow, kind of, guide these students to that next level, and to be able to bring that level of success, and, you know, there's no finer testament than to have your students nominate you for something and for you to be recognized by your students as well, so honestly, that, you couldn't ask for any more, and I mean, we're grateful to have someone in that position of your caliber, so thank you again for everything that you're doing, and this, the fine arts is such an incredible area, so I'm grateful, grateful for your place being there.
Thank you very much, yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Ms. Thornton and Ms. Gould, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Perry, members of the Board. It is my great pleasure tonight to introduce to you our head coach of our Special Olympics team, Ms. Christina Gould, and she's going to talk to you, she has some special guests, and she's going to talk to you about what it means to be a Special Olympics Oklahoma State Banner Champion.
All right, yeah.
I don't know why, this is the only place I get nervous talking. First, the, this award is phenomenal, I'll explain a little bit more about it, I have it all written down, but first I do want to introduce Ms. Lisa Dunlap, if you'll come up, she was our Unified Champions Coordinator for the high school chapter last year, for the 22-23 school year, and then our current board, when I say your name, if you guys will come up, Danny, Kenzie, Presley, Caitlin, and Kyle, you guys will come up here. Oh, and Gina, sorry. I knew I was going to forget somebody, sorry about that. Okay, this is our, our board that really put in the work last year, everybody had something to do with it, but this is the board that, that had the most impact on the school last year, and I wanted to recognize them specifically. Everyone else, if you'll come up behind me, Jackson, Jalen, Ashton, whole group, Gracie, Omar, you guys will come up behind me. Okay, I'm going to go ahead, Unified Champion Clubs are student-led organizations, we started these a couple of years ago in Broken Arrow, we are now in five sites, looking into six sites across the district that have started their own student-led programs. This organization is at the site level, the mission is to promote social inclusion through intentionally planned and implemented activities affecting systems-wide change in schools, climate, and culture. With Unified Sports as the foundation, this model offers a unique combination of effective activities that equip young people with tools and training to create sports classroom and school climates of total acceptance. These are climates which allow students with exceptionalities to feel welcomed and are routinely included in and feel a part of all activities, opportunities, and functions that are offered at the school sites. Broken Arrow High School has done an amazing job of this, so I'm going to talk just a little bit about what we did last year to earn this award. Statewide, there are only 22 chapters that hold this title, the state banner title. These are some of the requirements, one is Unified Sports, a fully inclusive sports or fitness program that includes approximately equal number of students with and without intellectual disabilities. Broken Arrow High School offers Unified Soccer, Unified Cheer, Unified Volleyball, Unified Bocce, and Unified Cornhole throughout the school year. Inclusive leadership is also included, students with and without intellectual disabilities work to lead advocacy, awareness, inclusion, and other Special Olympics activities throughout the school year. At Broken Arrow High School, we have a Unified Champions Club that is fully student-led by these wonderful people behind me, and they are students of all ability levels. Whole school awareness, awareness and education activities that promote inclusion and reach the majority of the school population. Last year, again, was a phenomenal year for Broken Arrow High School, not only were our Unified Sports and Cheer teams included in both of the fall and spring pep assemblies, but we also, for the first time, had a Special Olympics athletes that were included in homecoming and were allowed to have a homecoming court. So, it was huge for Broken Arrow. Yes. We are so confident in the inclusion momentum at Broken Arrow High School that Special Olympics Oklahoma has specifically asked us to apply for the national banner recognition, putting us in an elite group of schools in Oklahoma who received this award. We should be finding that out soon, and I promise to let you know as soon as I find out, I will probably be screaming it from the rooftops, so hopefully we get that. But first, I'd like you to hear from Gracie, there you are, she was one of our leaders last year, she is a graduate, but of what Special Olympics and the Unified Champions Club means to her, so.
Hi, I'm Gracie, well, I just graduated from Broken Arrow, y'all know that, I was active in six clubs in advanced leadership, and by far Unified Champions was my favorite. I learned a lot about inclusion, and like, I already had respect for all my teachers and the SPECT teachers, because I know it's a lot already, but just learning firsthand everything they do every day, taking the kids to the nurses, making sure, like, just everything, like, I just grew a lot of respect for them and the students, and so I became part of Unified Champions, and that was just a game changer for me, like, my perspective on everything changed me as a person. My favorite is probably Cheer by far, they're super fun, they love when they get those pom-poms, those girls, and Kyle, they, they are just, it's just the joy on their face, I love it, and Cornhole, like, I don't really win much, I'm not very good at anything, any sport, and Cornhole, like, everybody gets their awards, their badges, and everybody's just so happy at the end of the day, just a great bonding experience, and I've made some of my best friends in this program, even, even kids with ADD, like, still, like, they'll call me, "Hey, I miss you," write me letters, and it just, it's so sweet, and like, I love this program so much, and I'm so thankful I have this, so, thank you.
That's awesome, awesome.
So, without further ado, we are happy to present the Broken Arrow High School Chapter of our Unified Champions Club with the 2023 State Champion Banner presented by Special Olympics Oklahoma.
How about we have all of y'all come up here in the front and we get a good, big picture of everybody, but...
I want to say thank you to the adult and student leaders who advocate for all of our students and then for the courage of our students too, for stepping up and participating, our athletes are doing that, so great job.
Thank you. Y'all might squeeze on in and come over on this side. Perfect. Thank you all for everyone that's involved in this, Coach, great job, you guys have done a phenomenal deal, and students, thanks for getting involved in that, that, you know, touches our heart to be able to see this type of activity and engagement from all levels, so thank you again for the program you're continuing to drive. Number eight, we will be, we'll be skipping over that, we're actually going to be moving that to the next board meeting, so it was just information only, so we'll share that again next, next month. Next item is Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Perry and members of the Board, hopefully this will be the last time that I'll be coming to present or asking for approval for an assistant principal, I feel like I've been up here every meeting, so, but we're so excited because we found a candidate to fill the position of assistant principal at Oak Crest. Being this late in the year, you know, it's wonderful to work for a district such as ours, because it does make finding great candidates a little easier, and so I am here tonight to ask for your approval for Dr. Heather Palmer. Dr. Palmer is actually a resident of Broken Arrow, and her kids have gone through Broken Arrow public schools, we actually were talking about people we knew in common at Vandiver Elementary, because that's where her kids attended. So she actually is coming to us with experience, she has been a dean of students, an assistant principal, she's been a community school coordinator, and she's also served as a counselor, and during her interview, what really came through to us was her heart for students, her heart for students that really need somebody to love them, and really just wanting to be a part of the Broken Arrow family, so tonight I'm asking your approval for Dr. Heather Palmer to serve as the assistant principal at Oak Crest Elementary.
Awesome. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, motion's been made in the second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. All right, congratulations. Dr. Palmer, is she here? Oh, hi! So do you have some special guests with you tonight that... All right. Well, congratulations, welcome to the Tiger family, you've been here a while anyways, but we welcome you into the folds, and I tell you, we're excited to have you on board.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great. All right, Mr. Sappington.
Good evening, Mr. Perry, members of the Board, tonight we are seeking your approval to hire Michael Whitmer as an assistant principal intern at Sequoia Middle School. Mr. Whitmer comes to us from Broken Arrow High School, where he has served as a history teacher and a basketball coach. Mr. Whitmer has been, has also been a member of the BA Aspiring Administrators Group. We are excited to have Mr. Whitmer joining our secondary admin team at Sequoia with your approval.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. All right, well, congratulations. Is Mr. Whitmer?
He's, he's not here.
Oh. Well, welcome to the family, we'll give him a hand, congratulations. All right, Mrs. Sunderland.
Good evening, Mr. Perry and members of the Board, it is my pleasure tonight to come to you and talk to you about some money that the Oklahoma Department of Career and Technology Education is giving us, they've upped our allocation, we had 13 teachers who were previously unfunded that are now funded teachers, and it's increased our allocation by about $150,000, so just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight.
Heck, yeah.
That's great, and I appreciate your work doing that too, of, you know, spearheading that and being an advocate for your teachers in that area, so.
So the total allocation is $341,240? Okay? That's awesome, that's incredible. Okay? Yep, we need to vote on it. I'll make a motion to approve. Okay, motion's been made in second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. What an incredible deal, just my comments about that, I mean, to be able to increase that amount of funding, I mean, that's, to be able to raise the bar that high, Mrs. Sunderland, that's impressive, so thank you, guys, for the program, I know it takes a team and an effort to be able to just, you know, we're always struggling for funding and things of this nature, and something of this caliber of this level, I mean, that's remarkable, so thank you for the contribution and the things you've done, so appreciate it. Okay. Comments from the public, we do have Mr. Howard Clark, sir, if you would like to step up to the podium. I know you have your support team out there with you, so. And as you're making your way up there, it will be, you will have three minutes to make your comments, and...
I've lived in Broken Arrow for the last 29 years, same place, and every year that I get kids going, I was getting Catoosa and then I moved to Broken Arrow for some reason. Anyway, long story short, is the bus barn, and I keep going back and forth every time I try to get a bus stop, and the bus stop should be at the driveway where it's been for about 12 years, and my problem with it is, is I've got a bus stop for it, but it's the worst section out there, it's on a blind curve, it's just, it's not good, 289th and 21st, and it's just, you got the hidden curve, so I just want them to call me back, they told me they'd work something out with me, let's work something out, just call me back, or come to the driveway and drop her off. I don't want them to pick them up in the morning right now, I just need them to drop them off in the afternoon, so I'll ask for it.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is the general consent items, we are pulling number 66 from the general consent items, they are no longer wanting to move forward with this item, so that item will be pulled from the general consent agenda. Any questions? Okay. Welcome, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, listed consent agenda items minus number 66.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, a motion's been made in a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. Maybe take a minute, oh, there it is. Ms. Eniff, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Perry, members of the Board, my first item tonight is to ask for approval for our estimate of needs audit for the 23-24 school year. This is our annual audit that we complete every summer at the conclusion of our fiscal year, which is June 30th, that sets our legal appropriations with the Tulsa County Excise Board, and it is due to their office for their board approval by October 1st, and kind of sets the foundation for our financial reporting season. The estimate of needs accomplishes us a few things, it sets our mill rate for the year, it's, which our district valuation goes into account in that, this year we are at 27.27, and that's down a little bit, because we saw a very significant increase in our valuation between Tulsa and Wagner County, which is phenomenal news for the district, that goes into our bonding capacity, and it's just very positive.
Questions? Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Motion's been made in second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes. Ms. Eniff? Next item?
Next item is our annual operating budget, and this is the budget that we actually use as our living document for the 23-24 fiscal year. We set this budget at a much lower level than the estimate of needs, because this is kind of the actual real-life nuts and bolts of what it takes to run the district, and so to start off with, again, just reviewing the general fund revenue budget, this year will be kind of our first normal year back from COVID and the various relief packages that were passed during COVID as one-time stimulus funds into the district, and so again, the importance of maintaining consistent local and state revenue is, is very important to continue operations as we have gone through COVID. Points of the general fund revenue budget and expenditure budget, we are setting, asking for approval of our expenditure budget of $180 million this year. A lot has gone into that figure with everything from the one-time retention stipend, the welcome stipend, a significant number of classroom support and certified positions, support positions, and then, of course, the salary adjustments that were legislatively mandated, and then the support $2 across the board increase that we saw. Also, just wanted to point out, as part of our financial reporting and review with the State Department of Education, our administrative costs this year came in at 2.87% by law, because of our district size, we are not allowed to exceed 5%, and you can see we are well below that. That's typically an area that's scrutinized pretty heavily, and we're proud of that number and feel like that number represents the efficiency of how we do things in the district. So the biggest change with our proposed revenue budget for this year is obviously the increase in our state aid, and that's what is generating the state mandated raises for our certified staff, so seeing a pretty significant increase in state aid going from an allocation of $62 million to just north of $73 million, and that is our preliminary allocation, we will receive a midterm adjustment allocation in January once our October 1 numbers are certified. Looking at the expenditure budget, again, $180 million is what we're projecting for the year, and want to definitely point out that the majority of our expenditures are going towards direct classroom instruction, and so that is every, everything from our certified teachers to the curriculum that we, that we provide with the next largest piece... teachers to the curriculum that we provide, with the next largest piece going to support services, all the ancillary services that are needed to support classroom instruction. In our building fund, probably the biggest difference from last year is with the Red Bud funding. The district has received Red Bud funding in the past, but because of legislative changes last year, it's gone from basically a cash collection fund to a state allocated source of revenue. And so, at this point, we're projecting about $3.4 million into that category, which is a significant amount of revenue when you consider, building fund has typically been a very narrow source of revenue for us. So, we're looking at going from about $8 million to hopefully $11 million of revenue in this fund. We haven't received confirmation of that funding yet, but those are the early projections. And so, with that projection, we are also expecting significant increases in expenditures because we will have to spend those Red Bud funds in accordance with the rules and regulations surrounding those funds. So, projecting $12.9 million of expenditures for building fund. And finally, child nutrition. They are still a completely self-sufficient fund with their revenue and expenditures, with the local sources coming in much stronger with the change in moving from free and reduced universal lunches ending to back to, in a pre-pandemic operations, expecting their revenue to remain strong. And they are carrying over a pretty significant amount of revenue from the end of last year that they're working to spend down this year. And so, their proposed expenditure budget is $12.5 million. Again, they cover everything from their own salary and benefit costs, workers' compensation, indirect costs for business personnel, and things like that.
Nice job. Any questions?
Nope.
Welcome to motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, motion's been made. In a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
The next item is to ask the board to approve the ratification of the negotiated agreement between the district and Broken Arrow Education Association for the 23-24 school year. Mr. Stecker and I had the pleasure of conducting negotiations with BAEA over the summer, and think we have some representatives with us. And Ms. Warren could not be with us tonight, but definitely appreciate her efforts in making it a successful collaboration between the district and the union this year. The ratification was sent out shortly after school started and passed with a 99.8% approval. And so, tonight, we bring forward the compensation schedule, the stipend schedule, and the language for the 23-24 school year.
First off, I'd definitely like to recognize all the work that you guys go into, you know, making this happen. I know it's a full effort from the union, from the staff and administration that collaborates together and works out the agreements that are being put in place. And so, again, I appreciate the process, that it definitely allows for us to be able to continue to drive. You know, we want to be the best school district in the state, and, you know, having this collaboration and cooperation, I think, continues to help fuel that and drive that success. So, thank you all for all the effort that goes into this agreement. Thank you.
So, good evening, board and Mr. Perry. My name is Sherri Bible, and I am the vice president for BAEA, and Meg could not be here tonight. And so, on behalf of the Broken Arrow Education Association, we would like to thank you guys very much. We want to thank the school board, and we want to thank the school district for supporting our teachers, and we just look forward to having another wonderful school year with you guys.
Thank you, and we appreciate what you do every day for our students.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Leach.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring for your approval amendment number two for the Event Center project, which will result in a net increase of $1,791,359 to Flint Co.'s construction management contract. This is pursuant to Flint Co.'s construction contract originally dated January 11, 2021.
Can you just kind of briefly talk a little bit of what maybe drove the new increase?
Sure. So, when the project is bid and construction begins, we sign a guaranteed maximum price, which is amendment number one to Flint Co.'s, or a construction manager's contract, and that sets essentially the price of the project. Within that are included some allowances and contingencies for unforeseen conditions or owner-directed changes, or maybe some errors and omissions that are on the plans that have to be paid for. So, when you run out of that money, that contingency money, then that may result in an additional amendment, what in a different delivery method might be called a change order, which I think you're familiar with. This would just be a second amendment to Flint Co.'s contract. So, in this case, we've had some unforeseen conditions and several owner-directed changes. An opportunity for us, you know, we realize that we have some unspent monies that have not been committed to the project, and we have an opportunity to make this project what it was envisioned to be during the design that we can now bring to fruition.
Outstanding. Perfect. Glad to hear that. Thank you for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made. In a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Dyas.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring for your approval just a revision to policy 4280. This is the search of students for possession of illegal substances, weapons, or related items. It's just a very slight modification on page two. It specifically references and says, it used to say strip searches are prohibited. Now, it's just changed to students' clothing will not be removed unless it is cold weather outerwear, shoes, hand and head coverings. So, just a slight modification in the change. Thank you. Yes, and it is related to legislation.
Okay. And I know we've already had.
So, yes, and the reason we're bringing this up early, usually, we would wait until October when Mr. Stecker brings up all the policies at the same time. But since school is already in session, and we've had a few students make some choices, we've decided that we wanted to go ahead and get this approved now.
Any further questions?
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Dyas.
Good evening, Mr. Perry and members of the board. Tonight, I bring a discussion motion and vote on motion to approve or disapprove of the deletion of Board Policy 2040 and the adoption of Policies 4315 and 5115. Policy 2040 surrounds our formal complaint resolution for the district. And so, what we're doing is kind of cleaning that policy up by allowing it to live in the student section of the Board Policy Handbook, and also in the employee section, which is where both of those formal complaint processes would live. So, we're just cleaning up a policy by deleting it and then adding that policy back to the student section and the employee section. And these have been reviewed by RFR.
Perfect. All right. Any further questions?
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made. In a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Bowser, I didn't get a.
There it is.
There it is.
All right, we're good. Mr. Bowser?
All right, good evening, Mr. Perry, members of the board. And so, the policy I bring before you is Policy 4400, which is our student transfer policy. This is a minor revision, and the reason we're bringing it at this time is because October 1 is when we make our next capacity determinations. And so, as we think about the growth that's happened in the school district and our efforts to be able to maintain appropriate class size so that our teachers can serve our kids best, we feel like it's in the best interest of the district to make a minor modification to the capacity determination page, which is on page nine. And we are only changing the secondary capacity, and so, we would change it from 28 students to 25 students. The rationale, again, is to be able to protect the class sizes and the growth that we're experiencing in the district. When we do 28, then that means that we're, the likelihood that our classes will routinely be 30, 31, 35, even 37 students is of a much greater likelihood. And so, we feel like it's important to be able to make this change before we begin making those capacity determinations throughout the rest of the school year.
Mr. Bowser, I just want to say thank you for kind of bringing this up and having this discussion with us because I know from a board and, you know, from our cabinet and members and everything involved, you know, we focus heavily on wanting to make our class sizes, specific sizes, smaller in nature to improve and enhance that learning atmosphere. And so, again, I appreciate the diligence that's given to being able to keep that in the foresight. So, thank you.
No problem. It is something that we constantly review, even the process, what classes we look at, that kind of thing. Because at the elementary level, it's pretty straightforward in that you have a homeroom teacher, and you can tell how many kids are in a class. At the secondary level, it's much more nuanced because you're teaching different levels of courses and different types of courses, subjects, whether it's core or extracurricular or those kinds of things. So, it's a pretty convoluted process. But I will tell you that we have developed a method that is pretty straightforward and easy to calculate.
And kudos to Mr. Bowser and his team that we constantly monitor this because we really feel strongly that for the retention and, you know, recruitment of the best teachers in the state, we have to keep class sizes manageable. So, I really appreciate his team looking at that really on a continual basis.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Totally agree. Thank you. Any further questions?
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Okay. Motion's been made. Second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
All right. Looks like new business. We don't really have any new business items, so the next thing is, is to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
A second.
Okay, a motion's been made. Second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a great evening. Returning to open session, we will have the deputy clerk read the minutes of the executive session.
The Board of Education and Mr. Perry and Mr. Bowser entered into executive session at 6:51 PM to consider the appeal of denied students' transfers with a review of confidential educational records and transfer requests of students whereby disclose of any additional information could potentially violate FERPA precedent of the state statute 25OS Section 307B 7 of the Open Meeting Act. No action was taken in executive session, and the board returned to open session at 7:18 PM.
Thank you very much. So, the next item is a discussion motion and vote on motion to approve or disapprove the transfer request for student A. No, we don't.
I make a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to deny the student's transfer request.
Okay, a motion's been made. In a second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is discussion, motion, and vote on motion to approve or disapprove the transfer request for student B.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Okay, item 120 is discussion, motion, and vote on motion to approve or disapprove the transfer request of student C.
Make a motion to deny.
A second.
Okay, a motion's been made. Second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Okay, last item is adjournment of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, motion been made. Second, please call the roll.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Thank you, yes. All right, thank you very much. Good job, guys.